Uh, first agenda item is the minutes from the June twenty eighth meeting. Any modifications? Justment's comments? Motion to approve as submitted? If I can make you go all in favor? All right, we'll vote. Very good. Uh, moving on to plan reviews, everyone should have seen that one of the applicants uh asked to be removed, that's uh no problem, we'll probably take that one up. Remember, I assume, so first plan review seventy five Crescent Road, Mr. Bass.
Somehow between when I sat down and now I lost my review letters, but I found it. Sorry. So everybody knows who I am, but I'll introduce myself, Rick Mast. I prepared the plan, there's Mark Tuttle is in the uh audience seated at the end seat. Um, and the property is along Crescent Road. How long have you been on the property, Mark?
Eighty seven.
Eighty seven, so thirty-five years, uh thirty-six years on the, on this property. It's a little under uh ten acres in size. And basically, the proposal is to subdivide two flag lots off of the um off of a frontage lot, then the frontage lot would contain the existing remnants of the farmstead that are still there, so it's the house and some outbuildings and a barn. And if you can see on the plan, Crescent Road is to the right. Those structures, the house and the barn, both, both fall within the front yard setback, but they're uh existing uh non-conformities, we're not proposing that condition that exists as today, we're not proposing to make any change that would worsen that situation. Um, so all of the three lots exceed the minimum requirements. The flag lots in the rear subdivision ordinance at some point was updated, then it requires uh a twenty-five percent increase in the yards for flag lots and the setbacks that are depicted on the plan uh include that twenty-five uh percent uh increase in setback. Michelle um and Stephanie both and Claire both are all three reviewed the plan, so I'm gonna quickly go through their review letters. Um, and if you talk about any issues. I am gonna skip over what I would consider will comply comments, just feel free to interrupt me if skipping over something you wanted to talk about, so starting with Michelle's letter, uh which is July twenty-seventh two thousand twenty-three. And the zoning issues, um number five uh is exactly what I just uh pointed out, the existing buildings are existing non-formities, they're uh in violation of the front yard setback, but we're not proposing any changes that would worsen that condition. Um, number ten, um a street light is required for all residential developments at the intersections with public roads with entrance roads and at other locations deemed necessary by the board of supervisors. We recommend a street light be provided at each driveway access, access of Crescent Road. Uh, there's two existing, I'm sorry, one existing driveway access and two proposed, um. And just before I go into that too much further, I want to explain the layout a little bit, um the setbacks or the uh flags are wider than they would normally be required to be. The only reason we widen them is to allow preservation of trees that are close to the property line. If you go to the second sheet, actually, uh we did do a conceptual layout just to show how these lots potentially could be built upon. Sheet, I'm sorry, Mike. So that sheet shows uh two driveway access locations, and you can see they kind of meander were separated from the existing property lines, that's in order to uh preserve trees and workout grading and things like that. Uh, the two septic areas that are shown for the two proposed lots were actual testing that was observed by the health department, so uh those locations have been approved, there's been no specific design, but we did um design the plan with uh what we envisioned, um. The maximum that that would be, same with the dwellings, that's a uh a large, single-family dwelling and driveway, so wanted to make sure that it was reasonable that these lots could be developed and not violate any standards, which in my opinion they can. So going back to the street light, there's two proposed accesses at either edge of the driveway, um, street light does not necessarily seem appropriate in that location, there's no other lighting that I'm aware of along Crescent. Unless you were thinking of lamp post, the residential lamp.
Oh yeah, that's what I was thinking, along the driveway, just to illuminate where those driveways are.
Right, so lamp post seems reasonable then, and that would be installed with the dwellings, um, and it would be served by power from the dwellings, um. So, you know, we, we could uh agree that if planning commission thought that was reasonable. Um, the cartway, and I'm just mentioning this comment because it's gonna come up later, I'm on page three subdivision land development issue.
One quick question, I'm trying to make sure, right? Then you thought, so you're trying to, there's not a lot of lighting, I agree with Rick, like three street lights and all of a sudden, you know, like on the front of some runway, but on the flip side, if it's a lamppost and somebody just turns them off, in which case you don't get the benefit, so would we just be looking for some sort of commitment around driveway lamp posts that will be eliminated or something along those lines?
Typically, I would think you'd want them on a photocell, not want them on all night long, uh, I don't think they're for the purpose of lighting the roadway so much as just lighting the driveway.
Correct, that's what we were thinking, and the ordinance says it's up to the board of supervisors too, so I think it's appropriate for you to make a recommendation as to whether you want those driveways lit or not.
Any plea I would make, and you know, again, I don't, I don't see this as a huge issue either way. That's a lot of electric to run for a lamppost, not typical for uh a normal residential driveway, but just throwing that out there. I don't see it as a and, and you know, an unsolvable issue. Okay. Uh, number three, just pointing out, Crescent Road presently is about twenty-one feet wide in total, so two lanes, twenty-one feet wide. Um, number six, under subdivision land development ordinance, uh so waiver that we didn't actually uh request. Uh, and I think it would be, I didn't actually go back and read the language, I don't know if it's a um discretionary item or would actually be a waiver, but flag lots in general are supposed to be two and a half to one uh length to width. We, we exceed that on this, but it does, it was done with some thought process, um. The width, it's more or less bisected uh of the total width of the property, obviously, the location of the septic systems had some impact on where that line ended up. Uh, but it was also trying to keep the homes more toward the front of the property, it is wooded, the entire rear of the property is wooded, including some of the areas where the proposed improvements are. Uh, so that putting locks that are deeper than two and a half to one, uh that does allow us to keep houses forefront and disturb less of the wooded area. And we didn't see it as a, an impact on the farmhouse lot either, so we felt that overall was sound playing.
If I can interject, it is a uh requirement, you would need to ask for a waiver, but I have no objection.
We will add that to our, our waiver list as well. Skipping to page four. Just wanna quickly go over the waiver requests, um. So, as you know, the township has replacement tree requirements, uh when you exceed twenty-five percent of total caliber or the total existing caliper inches of trees, you have to start tree replacement. Uh, there's a lot of trees on this property, so we did not want to uh locate all of the trees, uh particularly because we're not disturbing anything in the rear, so we're asking for a waiver to allow us to just go by area of canopy. And right now, with those improvements, uh which are significant, uh we're at fifteen percent, so we're still have almost ten percent of the total tree area to go before we would exceed that requirement. So that's the waiver request, uh Michelle is recommending that either uh a representative sample of those areas, um, be provided to document existing trees on the site, and maybe we could do a sample where each of the dwellings is proposed, and it may be a sample rear that's not to be disturbed for comparison, we, we would do that. Or a note on the plan that at future building permit stage, uh that would be further documented. Uh, I think we would be okay with either way. Nothing is actually being proposed to be constructed with this plan, um, these lots are large enough that likely this will be a custom home, it's not a development, um, so I have no idea ultimately with the shape of the home, where they're gonna want it, how they're gonna situate it, I made my best guess, but I would say it's a ninety-nine percent chance that's gonna be different than what is shown on the plan. Maybe higher than that.
Ninety-nine point nine, right?
Uh, so I, I, I think either way, that we do a representative sample now, may make more sense to push it on to the uh building permit stage when we really know where the houses are proposed. But give any thoughts on that?
Uh, I, in, in reading the comments, I guess what I would say is I, I drove past this, you know, I got good at this periodically, but after we got the plan, I made the point to drive past. It is heavily wooded, I think adding street trees would be unnecessary and redundant, so I think as long as you can give us a good understanding of what is there. Um, I think the thing that I'm most interested in, and I saw the recommendation of show the improvements as conceptual, so we can understand what would be required, and we can think about what we do and don't need. Biggest thing I think I'm worried about is really stormwater runoff and how you're gonna capture that, I, I know there's a bit of a swell there, but as you know, at these driveways, I really think we could understand how you're gonna carry the water down that road underneath those three driveways and, and get it off that. In, in my mind, and just speaking for myself, that was what jumped out at me as the most pressing matter. Other than that, I think the layout, it's generally fine, and the woodie nature of properties is fine.
Okay. Uh, just so you're aware, that almost the entire property drains away from Crescent Road, so the slope is from Crescent Road toward the back of the site, doesn't mean it's not to be looked at, but
Uh, a- agree, so I, and I guess where my head was, Rick, is, is it looked like the other side of the road was higher? So my, my basic assumption is the water's gonna shed to your side, so you're gonna catch all the runoff of the road, you're gonna have to handle that road. Now that those driveways are there, you know, it's, it's now gonna be impeded as it's sort of coming down, I'm just trying to figure out where all the water's back.
Yeah, a- and I think we can work those issues out. Michelle. So you kind of skipped ahead, man, as to all the waivers. And really, that, those are the waivers, in addition to the, the lot, flag lot configuration, it's the method of calculation of the woodland disturbance. It's the road improvements, basically, and the street trees, um. Uh, you'll find later when we discuss uh Stephanie's review, there's uh, and I agree with her, there's uh, some of those trees have to be removed to clear site distance, I had talked about this with Mark from the very beginning. Um, so somehow we'll have to tabulate that and see what's left, so we're not looking to not have gaps without street trees, we're just looking to use what's there as much as possible. So, waiver plus. It's it for me, uh, let me know, Michelle, you wanted to highlight any additional comments? Just wanna, I guess, emphasize that everything on this plan, other than the septic system locations, is really a conceptual design. When these lots, and it's been evidenced how this is handled on other parcels within the township, when they come in for a building permit, that potential builder slash owner will have to prepare a separate set of building permit plans and grading plans. We'll have to address all the issues with stormwater management, erosion, sedimentation control, all those issues. But it'll be likely a different design than shown on that plan, so. Yep. Stephanie's letter, uh the first, on page two subdivision plan comment number two is all with regard to site distance. Um, I don't know if you notice, I believe we do have a site distance code on that with the values, but you want an active rival. Yeah, and that's fine. And that's a, all will comply, I, we actually did measure this, I guess, so. We're confident we can. Okay. Um, I do not, I don't think I measured the, this department, that's not worth this, that's actually in a better, better location in terms of the road curve, it's just a matter of vegetation that needs to be removed. Crescent Road is a minor collector, minimum partway of ten feet. Uh, actually, that was a comment in Michelle's letter, the, the roadway map that I used shows a forty-foot ultimate right of way width, and I think Michelle said it's actually twenty-five feet of ultimate right of way width, so I'll verify that, may have been reduced in classification, if so, we'll reduce the right of way, it'll actually make lot one slightly larger.
Doesn't that open up the, can you get all of the internal site right away?
That's part of her, um, reason for. Either way, it'll either be right of way or an easement to allow that to be done at some point, so. Um, that's all of the seven.
Um, this comment five, that talks about ten foot with five foot shoulders, you do that.
Yes. We agree. All right, um, Claire, um had two comments. She didn't print her letter out, but the, the two comments uh with, with regard to landscaping between the two rear lots and the front lot. Um, not, uh, not uh perusing any buffer, and I guess my comment on that would be, um, lots of this size and what's likely to be built there, we'll do their own, own landscaping. So I'm not overly concerned about it in this particular case, um, I would rather not see some sort of linear buffer, I would let the owners deal with that as they see uh fit. Then she's suggesting that uh the township should encourage any future development to be consistent with what appears to be submitted on the conception plan, I think by that she means what we had discussed with the home situated more towards the front of the proposed lots rather than in the rear, in the middle of the woodland. I, I don't know that we can particularly control that, um, other than I would say it's, uh, with the cost of construction these days, not likely that somebody's gonna move those homes further back, uh, it will increase the cost of paving, the amount of stormwater management, the cost of utilities running back there. So again, I would say it's pretty likely it'll be developed, just like you see in terms of the location, just not necessarily the arrangement. The septic system s- sort of control that as well.
How many bedrooms are those septic systems designed for?
You know? That's a four-bedroom size, um, you know, they build a larger house than that, they'll have to increase them.
Make sure everybody understands and make sure I, I, I'm understanding and saying it fair, so this is just the subdivision, the improvements you requesting deferral, the deferral will be addressed as part of the land development, you have the final plans to come in.
The, the improvements that are associated with on-lot improvements will have to be done in the building permit, the improvements to the road, we are requesting a deferral until Crescent Road is approved at some future date. Unless, you know, through Michelle's review or Stephanie's review, something is identified that needs to be done to accommodate drainage or site distance. But we're not, we're not gonna curb the road. What we're requesting is not to curb the road or place sidewalk even at building permit stage. Just, just to analyze those improvements and see what should be done in terms of drainage, if, if any.
I, I see no reason to tell the applicant to put in curving and sidewalk, I do, I'm gonna see what the stormwater runoff treatment plan.
Yeah.
And there, and that maybe back at the other end.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah. Well, where uh Morris Road was relocated, there's curb radio, I think, come into Crescent, I don't think there's much more.
And so if I could just add, just to, in our statement, the trail and sidewalk committee with the mapping app that we have for the township, this area is not uh a future.
It's a good one, you should, although you'd be checking, yeah. Yeah, I think you hit it right on the stormwater management space. So, so Rick, I mean, it, I think I'd like you to come back one more time with those depicted.
You like me that much, huh?
Yeah. It's, it's a rare month, I don't want, wanna see it, um, but if, if we can just get those depicted, the, the, the layout, I think, is fine, I think having them close to the back of the front, you know, the, the existing ones so close to the road that the setbacks, I, I think are fine, and I do think the sub uh, the septic system will dictate where those homes end up going anyway, because if not, you're gonna be all the way at the back of the lot, who's gonna wanna put all that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that happening.
Yeah, so, like I said, the only thing I'm worried about is if you can give Stephanie the site triangle, so we know what trees are coming out in order to accommodate that and the storeboard.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
The stormwater collection system along the front edge, thank you.
Everybody good with that?
That's it, Mark, we're done for tonight, any questions or comments? Oh. Okay.
Hey, first four, seven, eight Main Street?
Oh, you want that?
Stay with us for four seventeen, right?
That's me. Four seventeen Main Street. Is Isabel's Kitchen, and as you're looking at the audience, on the left is Ryan Keenan, Rich Capusta, the architect, Vince Pillow, I'm sure you know, uh, from Isabel's Kitchen. So I have a lot of history with this property, um. I started working on this site probably in the nineties. Maybe close to thirty years ago, Vince. Vince looked a lot younger, and I'm sure I did as well at that time, but um it had and this predates Village Commercial, this was Otter Bologna Property at one point. It was a meatball, lack of a better word, meatball manufacturing plant at another point. Then it became Isabel's Kitchen, do you know what year, you're actually ninety? So for thirty-two years, it's been Isabel's Kitchen. And around, uh, I would say nineteen ninety-seven, it was a pretty big need to expand the facility, and at that time, Village Commercial had no provisions for a food processing use. So Vince worked with the township at that time to create those provisions uh within the Village Commercial District, um, it actually was, the ordinance was amended, it allowed for that use, but it had a lot of criteria that had to be satisfied. And after that, uh, we processed the land development plan, obtained the conditional use, and he built the building as it stands today. Part of that food processing use, part of the conditions are that a residential appearing building is in front between uh Sunday Town Pike or Main Street and the food processing use. So there are two residential structures in front of the building uh towards Main Street, the one on the right is a brick building that has existed since before nineteen forty, I don't know what, yeah, Europe's built, but well before nineteen forty, the one on the left was a dilapidated uh residence, and Vince actually removed it, and this was part of the approved land development plan, and build a new building in its place, residential appearing building to satisfy that requirement, and I think for many years, it was an empty shell, it's built solely for the purpose of meeting that zoning requirement that a residential appearing building was between Main Street and the food processing use, still stands there today, although today it's now been converted to his office use.
So this is, this is the one that got added to, to call the appearance of the residential?
Yes. So that one is now exclusively office use and conference rooms, things like that, the one on the right does have an apartment on the second floor and offices on the first floor. Building to the rear, the one that we're actually proposing additions to um, is the food processing use, um, that's, you know, where most of the, the use happens, uh, just not the administrative aspects. So the request is actually a waiver of land development, there's three in comparison to what exists today, three relatively small uh additions to the building, and, and maybe Rich, I would ask you to just give a really quick um description of what these three additions are for.
Yeah, and if, uh, if like if you could squeeze the condemned, we all.
Pull it down, yeah, there you go.
Okay, so let's go to the problem first. The one that did the plan, and that is, is right now the lot of the, the circulation throughout the whole officeing area, you go from one room to another, another is like, or somewhere for anything. There had anything wall ride and somewhere one, some of it be open. So that becomes a fact of the, of, of, in terms of how how those two interact, so again, the idea out front here is it creates, it creates a little, additional processing area that allows to keep that, those kinds of situations to fall by finish by seven. And that will hold that. Then you go to middle to back, little to the middle and back, again, this is the same kind of thing, right now that Alco is where your dumpster unit and Hector's did. They, they look back up and they appear to be permanently bad, the building, and dumped inside that the way they're inside that, is fact that also to be a major circulation area along the back building from the different processing area. But right now, trash is kind of stacked up in where, where product is. So the idea is you just, we're just pushing the dumpster out and still in that Alco area and building an actual trash where actual accumulately uh to, and again, it's meaning we're, we're building boxes, you know, so what happens is all the packaging format, I think giving a delta somehow, get moved from one process here, and it, it's always there, it's one of the stuff that's there, then do whatever needs to happen. So now it'll be a real long fractal separated from the circulation area that is currently getting this circulation system in some. On the, on the upper left is, is a, basically uh, two years ago, again, maybe he took and he took the freezer, basically a freezer storage area and build a new, and it will happen, you have every, every color to plan. And solidated the frozen, you know, the freezer storage area over there. But they realized as a, you know, along is, there's a certain amount of product that comes in frozen. It stays frozen until they use it a little bit as pieces in the whole process, you know, and it's all sad. So they found out is they've given up like all their freezer storage area which was fine for the finished product. Which was fine for the finished product. But it wasn't found out it was inefficient for the product. The ball product that was coming in, it was frozen, then they would use little bits of the tile. So right now they're jockeying trucks back and forth with the Maple Avenue constantly. You know, bring some amount of frozen material back. We build this, this, it's not a good area. We build this. Uh, we're not below two thousand square feet. Then. The, the, the frozen product that comes in, that's, that's used in the process. Will just come into site, say, it's like. Until it becomes part of the product, then it moves to the. The, uh, distribution center over May Plaza. So again, that's, that's what that whole thing's about. So.
Right now, Rich, sorry to interrupt you, but they're trucking product back and forth.
Yeah.
You gotta take it over to the freezer, you gotta bring it back to finish the process. So it's reducing that.
And you got the logistics though. It's somewhere else. How much can we pack? But since they don't have. Storage, frozen freezer storage site, they can't bring too much back. Otherwise it's a problem, it's not for things. And so. You know, so for them, it's a logistics issue in terms of efficiency. Uh, you know, for the site is good. So, so the three areas are. Basically resolving. Uh, what they're doing every day. So the damage is, they're not changing. The amount of processing they're putting here. They're just making. Taking away some of the. Frustrations that they have in trying to be efficient. And in reality, we see about stuff like this and it's something we've been involved in. As well as the other. Oh, this was the area. When you. Improve the efficiency of how the building works. You can actually. Increase the amount of product that you process in the same staff where you can. Reduce your staff and maintain the amount of product. A lot of people aren't looking down there, it isn't hard to get around building. And.
Mike, you did say that for. So. The, the one in the middle, the trash room, that, that, that's an obvious, just, you know, fragmentation of the existing building. The, the one on the. Front corner. Not a big deal. So the third one, the freezer. Is, as a result of having that there, are you now going to alter your parking driveway? Imperious surface? How are you gonna get product in and out of that freezer?
Is the freezer is immediate. It's immediately adjacent to the. The refrigerated warehouse inventory area. And that's again typically when you have freezer in a room.
All, access is all internal to the building.
Yeah, yeah. And so. Uh, storage area. But otherwise you're gonna have. Problem with. Ponation and freezing and things, so it reduces that. So all the dock, the dock, the space of the docks are. There's, it, you know, completely accessed through the inside.
Um, so we, we went to the zoning, uh, the ad hoc zoning committee. And showed them the plan, what we're proposing to do, little description and. You know, over the years, we have done several. Um, handful of waivers of land development and they usually fall into a similar situation as this. What you're doing is relatively insignificant compared to what's already there. And it had already been part of a previous land development, uh, process. Still think ultimately it's a case by case basis. Typically, they don't come in front of, they haven't in, in the past, come in front of the planning commission. So at the ad hoc zoning committee and, and Mike was there, Michelle was there, Stephanie. Sure. And John Kennedy was there. I'm not sure whether, I don't remember Manus, whether you were there. Okay, so John Kennedy was there and it was actually John Kennedy. Who suggested. I think that no one objected to the waiver of land development, but John Kennedy suggested we go in front of the planning commission just to see if there was any issues at. Planning commission level, which I thought was a good recommendation, so. I can go through, uh, Michelle's letter. Um, it's August eleventh. Um, so I don't believe we have any zoning issues with this. But I do wanna talk about a few, um. Her zoning comments. So number one is. With the zoning officer to determine whether a conditional use would be required. I don't believe it is, not my call obviously, but we did discuss that briefly at the ad hoc zoning committee. Andy Freeman was there. I think his opinion was the use has already been established by conditional use. So the expansion wouldn't require a second one.
That's the way the township has previously treated. Situations like this.
So I think it's important for these meeting minutes to state that the zoning officers stated.
Correct.
A new conditional use is not warranted.
Number five is, there is a, if you pan down a little bit, like. And when we did the, in the other direction, sorry. When we did the land development nineteen ninety-seven, the other thing we did is separated this from what then was the just cruising property. Which is where the cursor is right now. Um, they were, I can't remember if it was one big track or we subdivided it anymore, it's too long ago. But the building to the left of where you're at now, it's a standalone building, uh, mostly unenclosed. Is just their maintenance, uh, uh. Process. So anything that requires maintenance, they have a little bit of an office area that's toward the bottom, the way you're looking at the plan. For maintenance personnel and just storage of maintenance items. That adequate description, Vince, for what happens there. So. I don't know, to me, that's part of the principal use. Um, in terms of the use, it all supports the overall use. Um. If it's, it's not an accessory use, I, I don't believe, uh, the building is subordinate to the other buildings. I think in the. Ordinance for its, uh, non-residential accessory uses, uses the term use, I believe.
It does.
They cannot be more than five percent of the overall use. Uh, I don't believe it's accessory use because it all supports the principal use. Uh, however, even if it was an accessory use, that's an existing condition that we're not creating with this plan. Fact, if it was calculated that way, that percentage would be reduced slightly because we're increasing the size of the building. Uh, number six, uh, Village Commercial, and you've probably seen this in, in other applications, has density bonuses for sharing of driveways. And for, uh. Serving buildings built before nineteen forty. When the land development for the. Larger building was processed through the township for approval. Those bonuses were part of that application. So it was documented at that time. Shared use of the driveway. Uh, and preservation of the building built before nineteen forty. We're not altering either of those conditions. We may have to supply the township. With that documentation, which we're happy to do, but it has been. Documented on a prior approval for this, um. Uh, property. So that's, we're doing the same calculation. Anything that's changed. Is that there used to be, I think there were maybe up to three apartments at some point. Yeah, so that was, that would alter the calculation slightly because your non-residential space. Uh, is basically what's left over after the residential uses are accounted for. But in this case. Uh, because the residential units over the years were reduced, it gives us a little bit more. Um. Allowed non-residential space, we believe we comply with that. Just need to document.
And that was the nineteen ninety-six approval?
Uh, yeah, it was ninety-seven to ninety-nine in that range, but we started it. You know, took a little while to get approved, so. But I have copies of those plans as well.
And they were recorded, right?
They were.
And those bonuses are shown on the parts. Okay, good.
So can I just interject for a second? I just can't get a little. Way on this. If the question before us is, is this constitute a land development? I would say that nothing that you're adding modifies the use, so I don't think it reopens the conditional use conversation. And the modifications are minor and don't impact. Minor impacts to impervious surface, no impact to access points. I don't think this constitutes a landed on, and I don't want to be looking at street trees and setbacks and lighting and. All of that for something that does not have any food, so. Unless others feel differently than I agree. But I'd say one question now. Um, when you look at those commercial, the sods, those kinds of things. Where are they addressed? And I asked this in particular, I believe the, you know, Google Maps, so. That front left corner. Is visible and it's got twenty foot high. That's gonna be additions would be the length of that. So, uh, twenty thirty, it's a tall. White, uh, looks like a concrete block. And it's being pushed out further to the street.
The, the, that section will look identical to what's there, basically, so.
Well, what's their.
Well, did you notice it before you stopped?
Yeah. And I would suggest in the, in the light of a village. Pushing out to the street, if you can just put, um, uh, a complimentary maybe brick facade. On particular that front left corner. A brick facade that's visible from. Main Street and it's directly behind the brick. Beautiful nineteen hundred building, or the new one that you built. Just to provide that more of a village feel to it, sort of a big concrete twenty foot wall.
It's hard to make that building look like it's a village building. No matter what you do it.
Yeah, I know. Pedestrian friendly, street friendly, village.
You would tend to, um. Respectfully disagree. With the visibility to that building, because they're not, obviously we've all driven past through Harley'sville many, many times. And it does kind of sit in the back and it's, it's, it's. Well hidden, I think, for what it is. Um. And I, I think that that was kind of carefully planned in the beginning, uh, with how the, the front of the. Property toward Main Street is, is developed, probably for that purpose.
Yeah, I, I like the distance, and I think it's low, it's quite a great spot. I think actually you could back, I, there's two things that are. Really, they're not concrete building, they're, they're, uh, it's a metal panel, it's an house, but. This addition will be lower than the building. It'll be similar height to the part of the building, right? And I, I think there's actually. And I, I gotta admit this, you know, I just started. Working with Vincent, buying, uh, they are. About my whole life here, this is. Six, six and a half years. And that's. So I grew up on the street. Literally in my first work, I didn't even know the factory building back there, but, you know, you're driving. Harley'sville, Main Street, Harley'sville, the linear street, and a lot of anything along the street. And I, it's amazing, I, I drive there and I'm always looking at this, and it's the same thing along the street. I almost never look beyond. And when I went back the first time to, to begin to work for, I'm like. Well, there's like this really huge factor of that. Anyway, I thought of this though. Is a, a, like. It's. Probably about twenty, I think it ran about a twenty foot high wall, but it, I think it's twenty foot high brick wall. Will be more noticeable and imposing. Than the sort of the milky white.
I, 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 I didn't say so. I, I respect the question and I'm just happy involved in. See, I understand this, yeah, see the big white wall and then there's this brick over here, and it's pushing this big white thing, yeah. For report this. I don't understand what you're saying to. I don't know if we want to draw attention to the same. I'm sending you a book and then now it's like, oh, it's not field day, which today. I think that, anybody else? Yeah.
That's it. I mean, I, I've been comfortable working out. The issues with Michelle, or if you want me to go through them, I will, but, uh.
There's a picture of that building here, fire truck.
There we go. I'll snap a picture of that on the way. Uh, just to make one thing clear, there are certain criteria for when a building is closer to a hundred fifty feet from a, from Main Street. This building, even with the addition, is. Greater than a hundred fifty feet from the road right of way. I'll put a dimension on the plan to clarify that. Wouldn't conform if it was closer than a hundred fifty feet. Again, that was one of the. Uh. Conditions for, uh, the food processing use.
Any, any comment or pushback from Sam? Any comments in the cover? That being the case, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable endorsing a, for a line development with the expectation that you'll work here for Stephanie and as an officer.
You think the board. Wants an actual. Back of our recommendation? I don't think it'll hurt.
Yeah, you recommend waiver of land development, receiving to, uh, work with staff on recent project. My favor, I, I, any opposed?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. One ninety-six Main Street. Alright, yes.
Thank you.
The red man show.
Like the goal, mate.
Don't you change your shirt or anything?
See, Mark Tuttle, Tuttle's gonna stay for the meeting, but I think he said that. Not ignoring that. Alright, we were here last month, or last meeting, which was July, actually. Or June, I think, ever since we did have a July. Um, to discuss this project and Brian Huntsberger, we were last year here. And one of the pieces of information we were lacking, uh, was any traffic study information. So. Uh, David Horner, traffic engineer, did do a preliminary, uh, traffic analysis out there, did new counts, uh. New counts with the Wawa in place and mainland point the way it exists today. Uh, but also we established some criteria for how the Alabot track may be developed as well. So we could also account for. Um. That traffic, uh. If and when that site is developed. It's, it's obviously not proposed or developed today, but. Obviously, it's a site that's kind of ripe for development. Um, the results of the study show that. The intersection as it's proposed. Um, would adequately, adequately accommodate a left turn lane, even after all this, all that development occurred. With some buffer, um. Leftover between where the access is or the end of the turn lane is. And Stephanie's comment, Stephanie reviewed the information, and I think you were comfortable with the analysis. With the caveat that the intersection be moved. Uh, as far as possible from Quarry Road now. I think what we need to determine is what far as possible is.
Exactly.
Um, because moving it to the other end of the site, and we kind of discussed this before, isn't necessarily the best idea. But far as possible doesn't mean as far as the property allows. I mean, I think it means as far as what makes sense for both properties. I did do a quick analysis and. Sorry for the small scale here of the Alabot track, which is in color. And just so you can get a bigger picture, this is Mainland Point. And it's. Two driveway access or road accesses that come out to Sunday Town Pike. And this is one ninety-six Main Street that we're talking about tonight. So it does give you kind of some perspective on what you see out there today and what we are proposing. So it's almost a mirror image from a road access standpoint. For what exists with Mainland Point. So we're aligning with June Drive here, which is a. Semi-controlled access in that it, you are not able to make, um, left turns out. So we're aligning there. And then this intersection would align with what we're proposing with one ninety-six Main Street. Coincidentally, the frontages are almost the same on each tract. Um, there is a feature, a drainage feature that runs. Basically where my pen is, right there. So, in my opinion, we're close to where that access should be. Um, you know, obviously Wawa. Um, you know, obviously Wawa is not on this side of the tract. That's probably the, the highest generator that could be in this four-way intersection or four-corner intersection. Um, but we're spaced slightly further than we are on the other side of the. Street.
So first of all, thank you, this is exactly what I. Was asking for to try to. Figure out if we can understand how this will play out, so this is very helpful, so that's exactly my question is. The depth of this. Portion. Is, if I bring, if I brought that over here, would that get me beyond? The. The Wawa.
It does. Gets you beyond American Way, which is that first intersection.
Okay.
And I did move this fifty feet um be. Between when we came in with a sketch plan and filed the conditional use, we actually did slide this fifty feet further um. For that purpose. There is some site distance constraints as well in this portion of both tracks, because there's grade and a curb involved. Um, but I would be happy to meet. Stephanie out there and whomever and, you know, kind of walk the whole frontage if we need to, to figure out how this could work. Um, just to give you some. Explanation of the colors um. Alabot is mixed use, same as mainland point. I think if it were developed, I believe that it would be primarily residential, because that's the market today, I mean. There's not going to be a huge office campus built there, we've got two vacant office campuses today in the township, there're not going to be a third. Um, so these would be single-family residential areas, and I'm not intending to say that's where they would end up being, I just wanted to divide the land area up. Using this kind of basic roadway network. But these would be um, single-family residential. And that one, this would be apartments and this would be commercial. And that is basically the minimum commercial that the mixed use would require, and it's roughly equal to that block. But a little bit larger, that's on the opposite side of Sunday Town Pike, which has. The Wawa, Taco Bell, Arby's and.
Would you agree?
Open space.
Is this the target?
Not big enough for target.
The whole property is.
It couldn't be, it could not be a target, there's, the mixed-use district has. Uh, max, we're, we're not proposing anything on that track, that's not even ours, we're just showing that for the purpose of this discussion, we're only here for this one here.
How many acres is that one?
That's about six acres.
That's not big enough for target?
No.
Don't you think commercial area would be along the entire frontage?
It could be, it could be along the entire frontage. Um. I don't think that would be a huge uh difference in terms of um. Traffic generation, and we could look at it that way. Um.
Possible, the, the allocation of the portions to what use is something we would sort out on that side, what I was really trying to get is exactly your point of. I wanted to make sure that this driveway would line up with the proposed future logical spot for that.
Right.
Because that would give us then the opposing traffic movements that would feed into this left turn lane, and then ultimately that left turn lane going up to.
Thing that gives you is some room on either side of the entrance to improvements on the Alabot Track and our track too, if it's right at the property line, kind of constrained. You know, that way as well.
What are you proposing on your track?
Twenty-nine apartments. Here.
It's up, it's up on the screen.
Yeah, I know, I couldn't quite make the difference. In the back of the site is twenty-nine apartments. And sort of the townhome configuration. And in the front of the track, uh, it's a bank on the corner. And a retail building.
Is that where that private home is on the corner, right there?
Yes, where the home is.
Right where the home is, where the banks go though?
Yes.
Right, well, thank you, so that, that, that helps, Stephanie, have you had a chance to look at that?
So I'll just, I mean, I'll point out a few things, I, I mean, we understand what the assumptions were at this point, um. It is only half of the permissible commercial that's shown on that layout. If it were to come in, they could have, they could have. Additional commercial, but given.
You're talking about.
Yes, I just wanna identify that, that's the assumptions, we are okay with those assumptions, we know they have not been reviewed by Michelle or Mike or any other. So we had to have something to go off of.
If all of the room frontage on Sunday Town would be more commercial. Would that change the location of that driveway? I can't, I can't review a Alabot development committee yet, but I.
So what we, what I want to say is that it's, it's not the full amount of commercial that would be allowed, but we agree that at this point, it's a reasonable assumption. It would change the traffic analysis if you increase the amount of commercial in the site, but a lot of that access would be off of the Main Street. Intersection, right, if they're gonna access the Main Street. Frontage.
Would it require more improvements along Quarry Road?
That's what we're trying to do.
Right, I, I. I can guess that it might, but I can't say that a hundred percent.
Would it increase the traffic, the turning lanes or?
So one of the concerns would be. How we mitigate additional delay on Main Street. Right, for people going on Main Street, either accessing here or in the other direction. With this access location in the left turn lane, we can't increase the time on Main Street without building the queue for the left turn lane on Quarry and, and the rest of the traffic on or. Does that make sense? We get more green to Maine, this is gonna. Stack up further than it is in the current analysis, right, so it doesn't, it reduces the flexibility to adjust. What needs to happen to alleviate Main Street. Because it will increase the queue. On Quarry, which could mean. Additional. Storage, things like that. Does that make sense? I don't know if I'm articulating it properly, but that's what, that's one of the. One of the comments. Um.
To, to a stupid person like me, what you're saying is that you've got more cars coming out of there, you're gonna need a longer lane, you're sort of stacked up.
Correct.
Before they go out.
Correct. But you're ga- giving more time to Main Street to clear, you know, to clear Main Street, so they're gonna have more time that they're stacking here as they're. Wanting to get out on.
This is probably too far ahead, as Manna said, but do you know how? Long that left turn lane can be. Can, no, let me ask it this way, how much more commercial can they put on the Alabat to bring that left turn lane down to that entrance? Their entrance?
If I can answer that, based on the analysis, I mean, I will say in the letter, we tried to explain that the proposed, I guess the recommendation in their study, which we generally agree with. Um. Was to provide the two hundred and ten feet of storage, which does that plan, I can't remember, does that plan reflects the two ten or not? Storage, I don't know that it did, because we needed to update the plan.
Because the plan came in before the traffic.
Right, so, so picture two hundred and ten feet of storage, we have the bay taper, we essentially leaves you with. Fifty feet of a striped. Area for the left turn, fifty feet is, it's two parts, like you're maneuvering in for two cars to make the left into the access, so it's pretty tight. So it doesn't leave you much room. To. Extend if additional traffic. Right, is gonna be coming out of the light and you need to extend, that being said, we also. Um, they do, they did recommend proposing the two-way center-left turn lane along the site frontage on Quarry Road, so that's a little more flexible, because instead of a striped left turn lane into the site access. You would have your left turn lane for Main Street, and then that would just stay a center-left turn lane area where the queues could extend back into it if it needs to. Or if there's no queuing there, somebody can come in and. Use the area to make the left into their site. Right, so it's dual purpose. So. It's less defined than this particular situation, it gives you a little more flexibility for those queues to extend.
Who say?
Your site, and can you turn left in?
You can. Yeah, we're proposing a limited access. Driveway, it's shaded on here, uh, right there.
So the other part of that is traffic.
Oh, a left, yeah, there's, you think we probably can, because there is a dedicated or a, a center turn lane at that location, so it wouldn't interrupt, it wouldn't interrupt.
Say, for that movement, which is one of the comments, just. Uh, but the other part of that is traffic on Maine doesn't have to make the right onto Quarry to get the left into the site, they can go through the light and make the right into the site and. And access it that way, um, you know. It might be six, one half the dozen the others who do that, because if you're stopped at that red light, you wanna. You know, that, that queue. There's a queue there, so you might decide, I don't want to wait through there, I'm gonna try to get into Quarry to make the left in, but there's all, there's options. There, so I do think that um, I still stand by the maximize the distance, I think we need to look at that and. I would prefer the center-left turn lane option. One question is, and it was unclear in the recommendations, if that was being proposed for your entire frontage? Or just for the small area that's leading up to the site?
Well, I think we could. Make sure we accommodate it, whether it's striped or not, or not.
Correct.
Where we put in. Curb, we should accommodate that, similar to what we did on mainland point across the street, it really accommodates a bigger picture down the road when Alabot gets to that.
So I think, you know, obviously these are. Down-the-road land development items, but I think we need to understand that that would be widening along that frontage to accommodate whether it's striped or not, the whole length. Getting it would at least be there, everything else would be setback according. To accommodate that. Um.
So we, we have a proposed spot, but you guys will go out and walk it and see if there's any ability to.
Another uh.
We understood that pushing it to the end of the property wouldn't work, we also understood that you had a retention base and that you had a comedy, it was literally just working through. That.
So I think even before we would meet out there, I can look to see if we can maybe shift that center line of our proposed driveway a little bit to the left, even further. Already shifted it fifty feet, but even further. And see what that does to the geometry. Of the internal driveway. And maybe the better option is to. Um. You know, alter that geometry to accommodate a better separation.
And your assumption is. That other track. You're not making a left. In that middle road, it's a right turn, yeah. That's one of your assumptions.
On this one?
Yeah, yeah, that road there, you're making that assumption for right, yeah.
Um, I don't know, I don't know, to answer that question, I have to ask the traffic engineer, he assumed, I'm not sure.
Hello, is there anything? If it goes commercial, the frontage to connect to the other shop.
The Henning shop?
Yeah, is that.
I'm sorry.
Right?
I'm sure that.
There's another trap right there.
We all try to do that.
If, if the commercial ends up down here. You know, obviously that would require. Operation.
Right, there's extra traffic, you know, you need to set for. But if there is commercial, that's essentially gonna be, and they get to be a chunk, and you can split the traffic out to where.
The two different traffic lines.
Trap. Right. So. What's up?
I, and I would just add, I don't know, I know you haven't looked at the assumptions, you haven't looked at the assumptions, but we did caveat that. This is, they propose these assumptions, we understand the assumptions and we. We're okay with those assumptions, we just know that it's not the full buildout of that site. And. You know, things could change based on. Ultimately, I guess, what happens there.
If it goes personal, it's not gonna be. I can't work for Lord or out. They have. And really question. Or retail.
Could it be medical office though? Could it be, I've seen more. Just medical office buildings go up.
If you have, bring your medical right there that go over the whole.
And they probably need more. Stephanie, when I was asking about the left turn lane, I was talking about the one on Quarry, were you also? When I said, could that left turn lane on Quarry uh be extended um? If more commercial was added on the Alabot property, is that the one you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so it could be for small distance.
Yes.
Got it, okay, thank you. But you don't know how much more, yes, thank you.
Any other question? Any questions from the public? Is the book sort of be a done? Curious.
So. We have a. Two significant approval processes to go. First is called a conditional use, that's where we are today, so. We just submitted a uh. It's more than a concept plan, but it's not a fully designed plan showing what's intended, and we're kind of. Been reviewed by township consultants and we're going through some of the issues surrounding it. Um, if we get past those issues that will eventually get to a uh. Board of Supervisors Public Hearing. That hasn't been scheduled yet, but they do notify ordinance, I think within five hundred feet uh. Of the property.
Right.
Um, and that'll actually be a public hearing, the presentation will be made, there'll be additional consultant reviews. That basically does approve the concept, it proves the proposed uses. But then, even after that, we have to go through an entire land development process, that all happens here at Planning Commission. And then also the Board of Supervisors, so we're kind of at the beginning stages of fairly long process. We um are proposing four of the five buildings to be three-story, and then the one that's closest to the residential neighbor is two-story.
These like townhouses for townhouse for rent or townhouse for.
They're for rent. Calling them apartments, but really they're rental. So as far as the ordinance treats them, they're apartments. So they will all have their individual outside access, so they won't be internal. Always. What we are, the reason the Alabot Track has been discussed is because depending on how, how that's developed, it could impact. The sensible development on this size, we're just trying to do the best we can do, and the township's trying to do the best they can do to accommodate what could happen on the Alabot Track. We actually don't have any idea of what's gonna happen on the Alabot Track, or when. Uh. I, I just don't know, just one. The only, well.
I mean, I'm assuming they're gonna have to come for you. And go through the same.
Absolutely.
Same requirement. They don't just have car lots to move the people on, right?
No, so that, that parcel is governed under a mixed-use uh overlay district, so they're, they're, they're gonna be required to come in with a plan that has a combination of. Residential and non-residential uses, and then as you heard them talk about, the market usually pushes them as to how much of the non-residential uses end up becoming, whether it's office versus retail. Industrial, everything's permitted in mixed use anyway, or what anybody want it to be, so by definition, it's gonna have to be some combination of residential, non-residential uses. That's what, that's what's required along Sunday Town. Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And that actually involves, and uh to, you know, just beyond the township, and the same for this or our track, we'll have to actually go and uh as well.
It might stay a course here at the night, ten years.
Good.
Um, just. For the record, we ask whoever provides comments at a meeting, identified uh name and address.
Yeah.
I got it. Thanks.
Is Waverly in mainland ridge? Pardon, is that in mainland ridge or Waverly? Um. Good enough state.
Okay. Um, couple other things involving this tract, um. We had discussed some zoning issues, a recommendation by the planning commission was made that we suggest some language. Uh, which we have um. Regarding uh allowing a, a bank use uh within the RO, and also. In my opinion, clarifying the driveway. Uh, requirements for corner lots, um. And I did get your email, Mike, uh, so we forwarded that to Carl Wiener, African's attorney, he's gonna put it in ordinance form. Let's fit that, so we're, we're working on that. Uh, my only suggestion is township probably ought to look to see whether. The bank use should be clarified in other districts as well, it's not necessarily handled consistently through the uses, uh, builds commercial treats it one way, commercial treats it another way. Um. You know. Something that's up to the township, but just pointing that out. Um.
Any, I mean, if anybody has driven A Street past Alabot at eight AM or five PM. Realize the traffic's already. Any consideration? Any consideration will expand sixty-three Main Street. I know that's pent up, I mean, seriously, it's gonna be building with the anticipation of the Alabots. Will probably turn something at some point, whether it's a nerve or residential.
So.
The road can't handle the city. Just drive down here tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, pull off the turnpike at five o'clock, then tie yourself. See how long it takes to get from the turnpike to the birdie spark.
So there is, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a an overall plan for the improvement of Sunday Town Pike. And as developments come in, they are required to make improvements along their property frontage. So when the mainland forty project went in across the street, which was from the Wawa to IG Land, especially that entire strip. Uh they had to put in, uh I think we widened the road twenty feet from what it was today. So that was to accommodate um currently it's into that site, but also the center turn lane that wasn't there before. But it's also to accommodate a future partway when the Alabot track is. Uh developed, so when it's all developed, yes, the road will be larger. That's, rest of it isn't gonna happen until that Alabot gets developed, but it is, it is being considered.
Develop, I think, while. So those properties are gonna have to be accounted for and widened with a longer term vision, but. Long term visions are. Uh more capital improvement projects, but it's a lot bigger price that is.
They've stayed in that road.
And again, that's not going to be a township.
Yeah, we're looking forward.
Let's let's deal with Alabot when we know what the Alabot thing is, and as far as we know, nothing's been submitted yet or. Reference to us as a as a plan. We, they just did it because we said, help us understand, we don't wanna just look at this and then find out three years from now when Alabot comes in that we did it wrong. So they they were, they were helping us try to figure out what might have happened.
Can I ask one more question?
One more, sure.
Thank you. Um is there any consideration where we wouldn't have this at rental properties? I'm really concerned, uh we have. A lot of traffic and we have basically a full kind of like a truck stop now around town, but the Wawa right here, you know. Like coming towards from the turnpike, uh people I know that work at Wawa are saying it's it's not real. Safe at different times of the day or night, and they had a lot of theft going on in there, and I'm just. You know, I don't mind whoever lives near me, I don't care, it's just, it would be nice to have the town kind of where it was at for as far as. Safety, and I'm just afraid we're gonna have more and more, it doesn't sound like I'm saying this right, but rental is rental.
I understand, so from a planning perspective, it's a permitted use, so we can't deny a property owner the right to develop. This particular applicant has answered a lot of my questions about why are we putting in so many rental properties, because I'm uncomfortable with that. I'm I'm gonna be particularly uncomfortable with three story rental properties. Ultimately, it's gonna be the supervisors that are gonna decide whether or not they're willing to accept that. I'm on record as saying I'm tired of three story rental properties. Anything else you need from Ozman? I really do appreciate, that is exactly what we're looking for. I think if you and Stephanie can go out and and understand the exact final location of it. You know, I appreciate it as far left as you can, but I understand there's not much more room to go.
Okay, that's, does anybody else have anything?
Very good, thank you, I really do appreciate it.
All right, thank you all. Can you, yes, I can do. I can email that to you as well.
I I don't know, I envision single family homes on.
Again, it's not intended to represent location, allocate areas, but, yeah.
That's it for plan review, so Clara County County Plan, I know you'd sent over some uh information for us a little bit.
Yes, I did. Good evening, can you hear me okay on this? Okay, great. Uh yeah, I sent along the memo summarizing all of the edits that were made to. The village district um beginning to the end of the past however many months we're working on this. So hopefully those um are clear and um, you know, understandable and and. And um or. Are um comprehensive enough for you to call exactly how the discussion went with them. I also sent along the um the most recent version of the district. The clean version without track changes and also the version with track changes. And um so now the last little bit of this, I know that during the last planning commission meeting, it seemed like. Um there was consensus that this would be um at a, the version that we have now is at a point where. Where it potentially could be recommended to the board, however, I'm still waiting on um. An issue with conditional uses to get a response from Andy, um one of the changes that was made. And I summarized it in that memo also is that we removed some of the specific conditions for conditional uses. Um to apply to all of the uses in the village district. And to just reference the general conditional um conditional standards for all conditional uses in every district. Um rather than listing them out separately for the village district. Um and as part of that change, we just wanna make sure that what we're doing is permissible and and Andy is comfortable with that. I think um we discussed what those changes would be with the planning commission and and in terms of the. Requirements of for the conditional uses, I think that we were, everyone was in in agreement that that change would make sense, but I just wanna have. Andy's final okay before we move forward with anything. And then if there are no other further comments from that, then we can um. You know, wait till we hear back from Andy, or I will reach out to Andy and see if he has any. Um final concerns that need to be addressed with that before moving forward, and so I'll bring that to the um September planning commission meeting. Um and I also sent along a a memo summarizing some con- considerations for building height definition. So I was gonna mean that.
You could go through that, because I I had that, went through it and I I. The college one, collegeville one seemed unnecessarily complex, but I figured I'd have you walking through it.
Okay, yeah, sure. Um let me. Make sure I have that up. Okay, so um what we. I'm sorry, hold on one second, let me pull that up on my end. What we um discussed last time was the option to um. Just make some, make the maximum height definition be reliant on just the maximum height of the building across the board. Um with no um. Uh with no chimneys or perturbances of a certain height permitted above that maximum height. And the the height of the building, the tallest point would be the definition. Um so as I looked further into that, I realized that there are some places that um. That use that that midway point as the definition because um. Because it wouldn't encourage uh flat roofs, and so I guess the potential, potential concern would be that. Flat roofs could be the result of a definition that is the maximum height of the building, meaning that there could be. Um that developers might take advantage of that being the the tallest point of the building, being the maximum height, and then just make a flat roof rather than having a sloped roof. However, uh sloped roofs are required in the village district. So one of the options that I um suggested for consideration would be to um. Take that approach, and if if the um flat roofs are not a huge concern in some districts, leave it the way, leave the maximum height. Um definition as the tallest point of the building. And if there are other districts that specifically you want to require slope roofs, then put that as a requirement. Similarly to how the village district handles that roof requirement. Um and then uh for Norbert, pardon?
Just to answer that question, I I just thought picking the highest point was straightforward enough. One, I wasn't too worried about residential putting in flat roofs, because I think the maintenance on that is horrific. I think in village commercial would require pitch roofs.
Yes.
And my other assumption was, even on a pitch roof, the ridge of the the. Goddamn, bro, what the hell is that called? A gable, thank you, um would define it anyway, whether it's flat or pitched, so. I I think we get there okay by just defining the highest point.
Mm-hmm. If the concern is mostly for residential, um more so than commercial buildings, then it might not be a. An important consideration, I just wanted to raise that as a potential concern that other places have had. In case it comes up and just um for the planning commission to think about before um moving forward with that. Um yeah, I I agree that the collegeville definition is a little bit um. You know, a little bit more detailed than Lower Southford might want to do, but it was just another way of thinking about how to address. Um address that concern of the roofs and and making sure that buildings have the appropriate articulation. That they might wanna see in in certain areas. Um Narberth was another example of just one that lowered the height across the board, so that they um. The concern there was that buildings would be too tall with this, with a sloped roof. And they wanted to just make sure they didn't have tall buildings in some areas, so they brought down the height across the board. So that they would have slope roofs, but then they wouldn't be above that um. They wouldn't be overly tall in some residential areas.
So I think the summary at the end for Lower Southford is, you you you're saying option one, highest point. And then use the mean grade, Mike, I'm assuming that'd be something you guys could easily measure and force when you're evaluating.
Yeah, I put, um yeah, so I I do, I I would still think that what we talked about last time probably makes the most sense. Um and then I included a definition or um a simple calculation for measuring that mean level. And and we can work on that, so I think currently, the example that I have up here is the mean level of the ground shall be determined by calculating the average. Of measurements of the ground level at two foot intervals at the perimeter of the building footprint in its pre-development state.
The drops off at the far end, steeply, that doesn't overly influence your mean pointer.
Sorry, what was?
She she said the calculation would be doing in two, two foot increments. So then you get the average of those increments as opposed to trying to calculate some curve line here, if you've got some sort of like drop off towards the back of the building.
Right, yeah, right.
Right, with with a with a building footprint, you could just take that perimeter and 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 um average that out. Um and the example definition also includes a a maximum of ten feet. That any perturbances would be allowed to go on a roof such as chimneys. Um you can also exclude certain features that, I think one example excludes um. You know, areas that humans might be habitating, so if there's any concern of an extra like half story being above that or or um. Um or something that would be larger on the roof, then you can limit that to a certain height, and then I would restrict that further.
Great, thank you, yeah, so if you could push that into the next round of edits, that would be great.
Well, this this would be, um if I'm if I'm correct, um in what you're asking, this would be the definition for building height for. Um the zoning ordinance across the board, or would it be specific to the village district?
Yeah, and and then I'm assuming that within the village commercial, you'll just reference the sta- so we'll propagate the standard, and then each of the individual. Zones will reference that, right? There won't be a height restriction of the bill of Jordans, it'll just reference the.
The definition. Yes, that's correct.
Anything else?
No, I don't have anything else, I will, um like I said, reach out to Andy to discuss the conditional uses for the village district. And I'll bring the updates to the um to the September planning commission meeting. And in the meantime, that that memo should be comprehensive in in the edits that were made. So if there are any um comments or questions before the September meeting, um feel free to contact me and and I can bring those to the next meeting as well.
Sorry, you have a question? Is there currently a height limit in addition?
There is, what is that? It it varies, well, within village commercials at thirty feet.
Thirty-eight, thirty-five?
Thirty-five, yes.
And Mike thinks it's forty.
Part of our problem is a little bit of confusion as to what it is, but the the bigger problem has been, how do we, how do we calculate it?
Right.
And so as a consequence, what we learned is that it's actually the average of the various points. So the higher you make the peak, the more you adjust the average up. And that was was basically allowing builders, as long as they made a really steep roof, they could make a much taller building, so we're trying to knock that down. See, I think it was the average of the two was the issue, so if you made a steep pitched roof, you you were only pick. You're only picking up the average incremental movement between the two, not the absolute height of the building.
The VC district allows for forty foot height and uh three and a half stories.
Whichever is greater of the two.
Or, right, three and a half stories or forty feet.
The calculation of the forty is, my point is, I think what we learned was that is. The 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 determination of the forty is based on the average between the eve at the top of the gable, and so therefore the steeper you make the roof. You could keep going up much quicker than the average would be up.
Right, yeah.
And we wanna cap it at a certain, the height is the height, yeah. Um so any ordinance amendments, nothing?
Actually, there is something I'm gonna be bringing up at the September meeting, and it's something in the ordinance regarding. Expansions of existing non-conforming buildings. The township ordinance does not allow for any expansion of an existing non-conforming building. If it, if if there is a, as a, for instance, a front yard existing non-conformity. And the building is too close to the street in accordance with the current standards, it can't be expanded at all. There are many realities that allow for a certain, a certain percentage of expansion for certain types of uses. By right and not have to go in front of zoning hearing for for everything.
So as an example, with the home on Cressman today, which is a existing non-conforming, the front yard, so they would not be able to put an additional on that home.
Correct, without having to go in front of the zoning hearing for it, so we've been talking about it a while now at staff level. And so now this would officially come up as a proposed ordinance amendment I'll bring at the September meeting. And what it's gonna focus on is allowing residential expansions by right. And then for non-residential, by special exception.
And usually there's like a caveat that says that you can, you can't make the non-conformity worse, like if you wanna extend onto the back, that's fine, but.
Right, yeah. Correct.
Nothing, that makes sense. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
And thank you, Claire.
Thank you, have a good night.